All right, we are ready to go here. Pardon, James? James, we're gonna start the meeting. All right. All right. Here we go. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, April 18th, and it's 7:15 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she'd please call the rule.
Yes, can I move on?
President.
Bill Kueke.
Here.
Eksia Vega.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumpel.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
And we're all gonna stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have two sets of minutes. It's April 4th, 2023, Special Meeting Minutes and the April, pardon me, the April 4th, 2023, Special Meeting Minutes and April 4th, 2023, Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? And if not, by acclamation, everybody good with them? Okay. And now we're under correspondence, and we first have a short presentation from Vanessa Reeves.
Good evening, council members, thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to make a short announcement about the events that we're gonna have this Saturday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day. The city is organizing two events. Our first event is going to be a litter cleanup. That's gonna be 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We're gonna all meet at Heritage Park, which is along the riverfront. So you can park by the old waterfront Jeep building, also known as Auto Max now. And from there, we will split up into two groups to tackle some areas along the trail we've identified that need some cleanup and also along Don Knotts. We're gonna have our Fine Public Works Department come and close off a lane along Don Knotts so it'll be safer for people to clean up along the road. So again, that's gonna be from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, and all supplies will be provided. And the event will take place with a little bit of rain or shine. If there's a big rain event, we'll reschedule for another day. And also, that event is on ISER for anyone who is in need of gaining some service hours. And the second event is going to be at the Mountaineer Transfer Station. It is going to be a three-in-one recycling event. So the three things you can recycle is common recyclable items, such as single-stream recyclables. And that is, that is for the people that don't have curbside recycling. So renters, apartment complex residents. So there's that, there's that material. And then we also have electronics, and that includes CRTs. So if you have any of those big TVs, come recycle them. Bill carried one up a hill last week for the cleanup that will be recycled there. And another item that you can recycle them is, there is batteries. And there's no other place in the county to recycle alkaline batteries. So it's a three-in-one event. There, there will be something for everyone to recycle. This is open only to city residents because it's part of our new contract with Republic. So proof of city residency is required. And on that same note about the new contract with Republic, they did just launch their new website that's devoted to the city of Morgantown. And what I printed out for you today is the sign that's gonna go on the new trash containers that will be distributed in the next couple of months. And it has the QR code that leads to the website. And I browsed it today, and you can get information on like how to report a missed pickup, the service schedule, and also events such as the Earth Day event that we have on April 22nd. And that, that event, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit. That event is part of kind of our kickoff of the events that we're gonna have at the Mountaineer Transfer Station. So every second Saturday is gonna have the single-stream recycling open up to the residents, again, who don't have curbside recycling. And that's going to be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And any questions?
Jenny.
Yes.
When was the first Mountaineer Transfer Station day?
The first one was on April 8th. It wasn't very well-
I'm sorry, the one coming up?
Oh, it's gonna be this Saturday.
So it's also-
Also on Earth Day. So that is gonna be 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then after this month, it's always gonna be the second Saturday, and it's gonna be just single-stream recycling. But this event, electronics and batteries.
Will there be regular battery recycling? Like if we saved our batteries for an event at a later time, will there be more events that will take batteries, like every six months or something?
Right now, we haven't discussed that with Republic, but there is that potential, just kind of depending on how the other recycling event goes and like if there's funding to fit that in. So because we didn't do an event in March, but our contract started with Republic in March, we were able to squeeze in two events in April. But you can recycle disposable batteries over at MUB's Annual Household Hazardous Waste Event, which is August 5th this year, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Yep. I always miss that one. I'm never here to-
Well, you can come to the one this Saturday.
Right, but I haven't saved up my batteries. We'll learn, we'll learn. Okay, I will now save up my batteries and find a, find an event.
After you.
I was wondering, actually, you go and then I'll go.
Okay. On, on the computers and what have you, will the hard drives be destroyed?
Yes, so they take it to a vendor called Elube out of Pennsylvania, and they do destroy hard drives.
And they'll give us, in the past, you've given some sort of assurance.
Certificate of Destruction. So we did that with some of the past vendors we did, like with PC Renewal. We don't have that system set up to actually mail out a certificate to a citizen, but we could get reports from Republic showing that those hard drives, drives were destroyed. For any, if, for any electronic that has a hard drive or anything that contains data, I recommend that you do a factory reset on the device if you can, like if it's working, if it's working before you recycle it or dispose of it, just for that extra layer of security.
Thank you.
My question was, during these recycling events, is it for, can commercial-
No, it's not open to commercial accounts.
That's what I was wondering.
Only residential.
Someday.
Someday, Jenny, someday.
Okay.
I have a non-recycling Republic question. Do you know when the new trash carts will be arriving to customers?
I, my estimate is that they'll start in a month and a half to two months. They, since this sticker was finalized, now it's gonna go in production. So it's in the works.
And just-
Yes, please.
As a follow-up to that, the current recycle carts that we have that are green, are they gonna take those from us?
No, no.
No, no.
So the green carts are for recycling, and then all residents are also gonna get a gray cart for trash.
So we're just getting the gray cart?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And the sign is what's gonna go on the gray cart.
Gotcha, thank you.
And did, did we say where that transfer station was? I don't remember if you said exactly.
I don't have the address on the top of my head, but it is in the, huh?
In the industrial park.
Yes, in the industrial park complex.
Says 2130 Rail Street.
Yes. Follow, follow the signs that say Republic. There's a lot of signs in that area, but just look for Republic and keep following it. And you will get there eventually. But it's, it should be a really quick event. So I know there's a lot of events going on this Saturday with a lot of great organizations that have planned events for Earth Day, but this should be relatively quick. You, if you just have those recyclables that you really need to get rid of, it should be just an easy drive-through, drop it off, and head on to your next event.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have the high school student report, Morgantown High students. And are they introducing themselves, or do you want to introduce them?
They got it.
All right. Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Maddie Walker, and here with me is Kaylee Mercing and Emily Carpenter. We are here on behalf of Mohegan Marketing, and we'll be giving a recap of the ongoings of the school and our community. All right, so the first thing we have for you guys is Mohegan Idol. This year's event was held in early March, and it is run by our student council-
Pardon?
Oh, sorry. By our student council. And it's a donation-based, so all proceeds go to WVU Children's Hospital. This year, in the past year, we were able to raise over $70,000, and it's just an opportunity for kids to showcase their talents to an audience. Then we have Freaky Friday the Musical. Our theater department has been working very hard, and it will be performed May 11th through 13th at 7:00 PM and May 14th at 2:00 PM. And at the Met, children are $5, adults are 10, and students get in free. So if you have time, make sure you go see it and support them. All right, and then we have MHS Spectrum Club. This is a recently developed club by Jess Robinson. It is for, a safe place for students with disabilities or those who are working to gain education or advocate for them. Our meetings are held every other day during our flex period, which is a 45-minute interest-based period. And currently, our officers, as well as other members, are working on presentations aimed to educate students and teachers. And we hope to have one done before the start of next school year so it can be added in to the presentations that are shown to teachers at the beginning of the year. And thank you, I'll pass it off to Emily.
This is the Period Project Club, and it, this club promotes like, promotes and gives feminine hygiene products for those who have a menstrual cycle. Like pads, tampons, liners, wipes, and et cetera. Students and teachers would donate it to the school. And then we, baskets are held weekly, and like, yeah, weekly, and they're always stocked and refilled. And donations are always like a big thing, and volunteers too. And our meetings are held after school on Mondays usually and during flex times on Thursdays. The band trip, our band and choir went on to Disney and to perform in March, and marched through Disney in the Magic Kingdom. Saturday, the choir competed in the Festival of Disney and won fifth place in the concert choir, choir category. And Grace Forman won the best soulist in that. And summer programs are, there's Summer Avalanche, it's on July 5th to the 27th. And Summer Sizzler is on June 12th through the 15th. All these programs are for free and for all ages, kindergarten through 12th. And these programs include things like learning different languages, offers foods, and trend, and offers like food and transportation, mental health programs, educational activities. It's school, the school runs it. You can register online on the school district page.
Nice.
So as you know, Morgantown High has a lot of athletics, and since it's the spring season, we have baseball, softball, lacrosse, and tennis. So the boys' lacrosse team is currently undefeated for Morgantown High. And our baseball team just traveled to PNC this Saturday. And our softball team just went to Myrtle. I believe they did win their games. The boys' track team was state runners-up, and our girls' track team is undefeated and looking forward to chase a state title this year. Along with the tennis team was Ovac champions last year and currently undefeated this year. And our cheer team competed and won against Wheeling. So also, prom is coming up, which is April 22nd, 2023, at the waterfront from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. So also prom is coming up, which is April 22nd, 2023, at the Waterfront, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. The theme is Vegas, and tickets are $50 per person. The pictures are usually taken before the dance, but dinner is served. And then graduation is May 27th at 10:00 p.m. at the Pony Lewis Field. So congratulations to all our seniors. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Does anybody have questions?
Good job, y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like how you combined all the different aspects of the story. Can't think of any questions.
No.
No, that was great. Covered it all? Yeah, really did. So now we have a series of public hearings, and the public hearings are just on that topic only. So the first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Pop Shop West Virginia, Inc. for space within the Woodburn School Building. So we're gonna open this public hearing. And if there's anyone wishing to speak on this topic only. We're gonna close this. Item B, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a deed of release from the Federal Aviation Administration in conveyance of a quitclaim deed to West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, for real estate along West Run Road. So we're gonna open this public hearing. And if there's anyone wishing to speak on this topic only. And we're gonna close this one. And item C, an ordinance annuling a portion of First Street and providing for dedication of additional right-of-way to First Street. So we're gonna open this public hearing. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is James Giuliani. I live at 256 Prairie Avenue, and I'm against this. Why am I against this? And we don't have any clock today. If any of you have taken the time to look at the annulment agreement and the, and the easement agreement, you'll notice there's one private property owner that still has property within that area, just one. That is my family, Giuliani Properties. Now understand, until I looked at this today, and looked at this and heard about the other day about we're just gonna spend a million dollars on a wall at the First Street, I said, what's going on with this? We've owned this property since 1976, the property that abuts and adjoins this. Okay? Are you, are you all familiar at all with what I'm talking about, this, this easement tonight? Are you familiar with it? Do you know what we're doing here tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we? Okay. So are you all for this? And tell me how it benefits the city, okay? So, we must read this, that we're gonna quitclaim a deed. Now somehow, when I was transferring properties from the city to the university, university to the city, we needed general warranty deeds. But a quitclaim deed works for me, and it should have at that time, but, so a quitclaim deed. And they're gonna give us $15,100 for, to get the enjoyment, to use this right-of-way, and therefore make their property all adjoining. It really benefits them, $15,000 that they can now adjoin all this property and have their use of the property. And there's a diagram, a plat in front of you. Are you all familiar with that plat? It says here that we're transferring property over here with First Street, and then we're gonna line up on the easement part, a street somewhere, but we're not quite sure yet, but we're gonna line it up. But we have taken in, and they're giving us an easement of 9,221 feet graciously, okay? How gracious is that? It's not gracious at all, because here's the fact the matter is. Why do we want an easement? If indeed they would buy my mother's property, which they should have a long time ago, and they will someday, there are no private property owners down there. There was a new B and E school that was built. They've acquired all the property Long Beach Hurst Avenue, only to their benefit. The only person that hasn't benefited is my mother, because they're surrounding him all over the place, that she's surrounded. And they're not good neighbors. So that being said, I then have to question, why were we not informed? Oh, legally, we don't have to inform you. We abut the property. We've been there since 1976. I watched the city never do anything down there. I watched the city never look at Hall Street, that's the street next to the Relsa Trails. They wouldn't touch it. They said, no. For 40-some years, 1976, 47 years, 46 years, they would not help us down there. They would not improve anything down there. So now the university owns every track of property. They wanna realign. Somehow the city feels that we need to realign for whose benefit. We never felt the need to realign when the university wanted to put in Campus Drive, and it was gonna be them, and it was their project. All that, do you remember? Does anybody in this room remember? There was gonna, they, the university was gonna realign Campus Drive and First Street and all that? They were gonna do it, because they knew how it benefited them, the university. So I'm looking at this now, and I see that with the easement, we're allowed to put utilities in. We're allowed to put a road in. Well, who are the, who would ever be putting utilities through there? And whose benefit would it be if they used the easement through the property to put utilities? What would be West Virginia University? There are no private property owners. The only private property owner is my mother. All her utilities are already there. She's never gonna need any utilities. She's never gonna need any easements for anything. The only people that would ever benefit by the easement would be West Virginia University. So my suggestion would be, to this council, is to do your due diligence. Do the right thing for the public, all the citizens. Oh, 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 but, but you can access the Relsa Trails through there. We wanna make an access to the Relsa Trails. Well, we don't own any other property. And in the easement agreement, in the easement agreement, it doesn't identify that we can do anything with the property. Let's read it. For the consider, oh, the declaration made here between the West Virginia Board of Governors and the City of Morgantown. They're the grantor, and we're the grantee, the city. Forward in consideration of $10, other good and valuable consideration that received sufficiently and adequately followed the college acknowledged grantor, with the intent of being legally bound and being obligated under any corals, being legally obligated. Grantor grants, conveys, and transfers to the city, and creates and dedicates and establishes in favor of and for the benefit of the city in and over, upon, under, through, and across the below-described parcel, perpetual easements and right-of-ways for the purposes of building, installing, constructing, improvement, extending, maintaining, operating, and spec, re-improving, re-improvement, and re-extending a public way and street with sidewalks and related advertisements, including utilities otherwise generally developing and improving the parcel for the foregoing purposes, including without limitation as rights a pertinent, the material essential and integral of such easements, and the right-of-way in such purpose, the rights of use and enjoyments of the parcel, to access the parcel by way of other easements, right-of-ways, travel and traverse, parcel with persons and equipment. All this is just saying that you're allowed to spend all our city's money, all our taxpayers' money, to improve a right-of-way that only benefits West Virginia University. Now, why wouldn't we allow them to have the easements? Allow them to build First Street? Allow them to build all the sidewalks at their expense? And then guess what? Because we were so gracious to allow that to do it, then the people that would be accessing the Relsa Trails, and I'm not exactly how, how they're gonna do this, because if they drive through, or they go to park on West Virginia University's property, it doesn't give us any easement in, within the easement that says that we're allowed to build a parking lot. It doesn't say that we can build a park on this property. It doesn't say that we can do anything. We can't do anything but improve it for West Virginia University at our expense. Do, does, does, does the first ward councilman care about that? About the third, senior ward? Do you care that we are benefiting the university at our expense? Meaning, we're expending the money to rebuild First Street. What do they get for $15,000? They get property. Do you understand how cheap that is? They paid up to $3 million an acre for property. Did we sell it to them by the square foot? How did we come up with 15.1? Five, five, $15,100. That's a pittance. That's a pittance. Have you all looked at this? Have you thought, wait a minute, there's a better way? How is this benefiting the citizens of the City of Morgantown? It's actually taking away from the cities. And, and this is what's so, so just very, this is the worst, and this is why it's the worst. I, as a citizen of the City of Morgantown, from 1976, could never get an improvement. I asked for the First Street improvements, wouldn't get done. I asked for the improvements along Hall Street, that we owned the property along there to access our parking. It wouldn't be done, it couldn't be done, they just wouldn't do it. They said, in fact, the city would say that we're not responsible for Hall Street. But now we're gonna upgrade it, we're gonna pave it, for who? We're gonna pave it for West Virginia University and the business school. We're gonna pave it for West Virginia University and all the property they own along, between Beach Hurst Avenue and the Relsa Trails. They own every piece of property except what my mother owns. And understand through all this, nobody came into us and said, maybe it's the time, maybe it's the time, Giuliani's, that we should buy your property, we should be good prop, we should be good neighbors, and we should do the right thing, because if we own everything around you, and now the city's even coming in, and they're gonna remove the street, and they're gonna boot it next to us? Meaning this, we abut this. Is the street gonna be right next to us? Is it gonna benefit my mother? Is it gonna harm my mother? We don't know, because we didn't have the opportunity. I'm asking you to table this. I'm asking you to table this second reading tonight, because you don't know what it's gonna cost the City of Morgantown. How much money is it gonna cost the City of Morgantown? And what is the cost benefit for the citizens of the City of Morgantown? What would they be? My understanding that it will allow access to the Relsa Trails. We already have access to the Relsa Trails. And what I would say to you is that, wouldn't it be much more economically viable and reasonable for the university to take it all over? They just take it all over. And as part of the agreement, they keep the easement, and they improve the easement. And with that easement, they benefit the City of Morgantown by saying to you, is along with this, we're gonna give you access to the Relsa Trails. We're gonna make a pedestrian walkway so that anybody wanting to go to the Relsa Trails from Beach Hurst Avenue through this easement will be allowed to do that. Why are we taking it on? Because eventually, my mother will not own that property, sooner than later, and there'll be, none of the property that is involved in this would be benefiting or owned by the city. Meaning every, all the streets and everything on it, they may be called city streets, but they're actually on university property. Is Maiden Lane a, a city street? I don't know, is it? Are these different streets that are on university property that are totally, that other people use them? Are they city streets, or are they benefiting the university? Who are they benefiting? So what I'm suggesting here tonight is this, very simply. Why are we paying for the university's improvements? These improvements are not being done. Hall Street is not being done. First Street is not being done. All these improvements through this easement are not being done. No private citizen will ever need an easement for utilities or any other use through this property, never. Only West Virginia University. I challenge each and every one of you council members, because if I was sitting in one of those chairs, okay? And I'm called not a viable, oh, I'm off subject. Let's not get off subject, let's stay on subject, okay? Meaning that I need to hold every council member responsible. 1976, we owned that property. I came to this city over and over and over again. My family has paid thousands and hundred thousands of taxes on these properties, and for this. We put sidewalks in at our expense that we had to do the city made us put in. Why are we paying for this university's improvements? Now, what I'll tell you is this. MUB is our entity. The university uses MUB like crazy. MUB wanted $100,000 to do a study to improve the storm drains that's all over their property doing us.
Now, now we're off topic.
And they wouldn't know. What I'm suggesting is, is, no, it is the same, Jenny, because here's why. You need to connect the dots, meaning that they're not willing to pony up any of their own money to benefit the city, and our MUB, and what we need in all our stormwater. But guess what? They want us to go out of our way to benefit them. Expend all our money, public money, for a public university that has lots of money, a lot more money than the city, and they're the ones that's gonna benefit from it. Now, if each and any one of you councilmen can explain it to me, how the city benefits from it, and how overwhelmingly the university doesn't benefit, that they should be the people building the road. They should be the people building the sidewalks. They should be the people responsible for the infrastructure, because why? They're the ones that's gonna benefit from it. They want an upgrade to this road, to their B and E. They're not happy that they got the crappy road back there. I wasn't happy for 40-some years, and I could never get improvement. The city would not acknowledge it was their street. Now it's acknowledged, it's Hall Street. Okay, and we're gonna improve it.
You have one more minute.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And, and so I think I've made my point. The city and my counselors that represent me, that, that are supposed to be protecting me, are not protecting my mother's property rights, are not protecting the citizens' property rights, by going through and entering into this agreement. This agreement needs to be relooked at, and needs to look at how the city wins. Why should we lose? When the state of West Virginia and West Virginia University are gonna take advantage of us and benefit from it when our citizens aren't? And we could take this money that we're spending there and spend it a lot of other places, a lot of other places that need it. There's other streets that need attention. This is gonna divert money that should be spent on other streets and infrastructure projects to the benefit of West Virginia University and at the expense of all other people. Maybe these roads that we can't get to, so, because they're so bad, we just don't do them. You remember, there was something called Forest Avenue. Do you remember Forest Avenue?
Now we're on another topic.
It was a street that was never taken care of. That's infrastructure.
James, we're done.
Thank you so much, my minute's up, and God bless you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's hear it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this topic?
Of course there's none. Nobody knows about it.
All right, we're gonna close this public hearing. Now we're on unfinished business, boards and commissions. We have some-
Mayor, I have a nomination of Barry Dixon, reappointment to the ICC Building Code Board of Appeals. One second.
Thank you, by acclamation. Everybody good? Okay. Then we have another one?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Trevor Lloyd to the Fire Code Board of Appeals. One second.
Thank you. By acclamation.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And whoever comes and speaks at the podium needs to state their name and address. And, and it, this is a timed activity. We're gonna open it.
Again, good evening. My name is James Giuliani. The real viable candidate for the City of Morgantown, okay? Much to what Dave Wilson says, they want to somehow control the situation. You see, I said things to the newspaper in confidence that wasn't supposed to come out till the next morning. A few minutes later, and I believe he's innocent in it. He puts it in newspapers, not supposed to. Dave Wilson, yes, who I called, said, I'll call you tomorrow morning and explain my situation. Okay? I'm gonna explain my situation as quick as I can in four minutes, all right? What was happening was that I have a situation where the second ward councilman doesn't support me, the third ward councilman doesn't support me, the fourth, the seventh ward doesn't, I'm not sure about the fifth ward, the sixth ward doesn't, and the seventh ward doesn't support me. They're all for the first ward candidate, so I assume that he doesn't support me either. Okay? So that being said, I somehow, this first ward candidate gets to go on Friday, man, right before early voting. I don't even get a phone call for an interview. Finally, I do get a call that they're gonna let me on graciously Monday, a day ago. But guess what? Wouldn't, they didn't, he didn't like how I wanted to campaign, or not campaign, which I spent thousands of dollars. My opponent spent $215. I campaigned heavy, I was campaigning, all right? Well, I made the decision I couldn't campaign anymore under circumstances. My wife's health, I won't get to see her full-time till June. She's stuck in Florida because of terrible health, okay? I'm trying to do the right thing and run for city council so that I can make change in the City of Morgantown, positive change, because of all the terrible things I know. I'm a viable candidate because I do not have a no-confidence vote about me. I don't know how people can be viable candidates when they have no-confidence votes from the fire department and the police department. How can you work with these people? You don't seem to be doing a very good job of it. I actually have ideas. A mockery? Dave Wilson made a mockery of me. He's in trouble. Under the FCC rules, you have to grant equal interview time. He then sends me on the morning, that morning, that, oh, due to I'm not campaigning hard enough, he will not interview me. What? All these things going on, nobody's supporting me. So here's the rules now, guys. The rules are this. The piece of paper that was in our packet for withdrawal means nothing. It's not worth the paper it's written on. I knew that, I'd already contacted the Secretary of State. Who's making a mockery of this election? When you have a date of January 30th to withdraw, and you can't even be a candidate till February 14th? What? That's a problem, isn't it? So nobody could ever legally withdraw from this election. I am on the ballot. If somebody wants to vote for me, they very well should and do the right thing. But I put conditions on it. I said, "If you want me, vote for Ben Mel, I cannot work with Brian Butcher." I'm being honest, I'm being transparent, I'm not like the guy that got elected and then told everybody after the fact that, oh, he can't do it, and then had somebody anoint it, all right? That's just not how I operate. So I'm here tonight to be as transparent as I can. I cannot serve on this council unless I have people that I can possibly work with. Three of them have to be there because they're there. The four others, no, that's a change. I believe I can work with the current councillor, one of them. There's three new ones that need to come in. Please vote for Ben Mel, vote for Wees, and vote for me. If indeed, you don't want Ben Mel on council, don't vote for me. Vote for Brian Butcher and vote for Joe Abagani. I'm clear in this. I cannot serve with this current council in this other makeup. I can serve with Ben and the others, and I will make my greatest effort. That is being as open and transparent that I can be to this council. So I look forward to working with everybody, but if that, I've given you your choices, I've been open and transparent. If you want Brian Butcher on this council, you want Joe. If you don't want him, vote for me and Ben. Thank you for allowing me this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public portion? All right. We're going to close the public portion. And we are on to the consent agenda. So these items get voted on together. And if anyone wants to pull one after we go through them, feel free to state that. So, item A is consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Pop Shop West Virginia Inc. for space within the Woodburn School Building. The first reading was for 4/20/23. The second item, item B, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a deed of release from the Federal Aviation Administration in conveyance of a quick claim deed to West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways for Real Estate along West Run Road. The first reading for that was for 4/20/23. And then item C is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance annuling a portion of First Street and providing for dedication of an additional right-of-way to First Street. The first reading was for 4/20/23. So we're about to have a vote. If anyone has anything they would like to object to, this is the moment. And otherwise, if the clerk would please, actually, we need some motions, pardon.
I think we should pull item C off and get a staff reaction at the very least to
At least discussion, yeah.
some of the questions raised during the, during the hearing.
Figured. All right. Any other items? Okay. So now we will be voting on items A and B as part of the consent agenda. So, yeah, we need a motion again because we just, we just.
Move to approve items A and B as part of the consent agenda.
And then if the clerk would call the roll. Just items A and B. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Yexia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. And now regarding item C, as the city manager, if he wants to, who, who he would like to delegate this one to?
I turn that over to our deputy city manager, Ms. Rely. She's been following this from its inception, and I think she'd give the best, concise answer to that.
Great, thank you.
City manager, so in front of you for consideration for a second reading is essentially an annulment of current city right-of-way and acceptance of additional right-of-way. So it's essentially a property swap with WBU. So we would be annuling approximately 2,777 square feet, or about .06 acres, and we would be accepting 9,322 square feet, or about .2 acres, or about three times the amount of property in exchange for our property. This is to line up First Street with Campus Drive. First Street does connect to Hall Street, which runs along the entire length behind a lot of the parking lots, this was referenced earlier today, all the way over to State on Campus, and where there is an existing rail trail entrance to Capeport and Trail in an area that we are looking to create rail trail parking. Our property, not only with the right-of-way along Hall Street, but then the Capeport and Trail, the property from the rail banking is back that way. Earlier today, I sent renditions that we had gotten from the NPO. So this project is separate, but at the same time as the Beechhurst project that has been started already. So that project runs a longer length of Beechhurst, essentially ending at the intersection with Campus Drive, and brings Campus Drive a little bit more on it, in kind of a curve into Beechhurst. And essentially really makes it a little bit straighter as you come in, instead of coming in on that sharp angle. It's a little harder to make that turn, and it creates some additional capacity. But in doing so, in the upgrades to that light, we're able to, through this process, if council were to pass that tonight, it allows First Avenue, First Street to align with that, and that creates a higher level of service for that intersection, being able to put it at a four-way stop. So if you were coming in or out of there, you would be able to make that left turn, potentially off of Beechhurst to go down to that, whether it's to the parking lot, that back roadway, or, or any of the rail trail parking, or there are some businesses if you went that way and headed towards State on Campus. Or if you were coming out of there, you can make the turn a little bit easier onto Beechhurst. You'd be able to come out of there and make a left right now, which is not something you're able to do with the current alignment of that. And it, and it makes some improvements to, I believe, some pedestrian access through there. So if there are specific questions that I haven't touched on, I know I provided council with a little bit of information earlier today, kind of showing the aerials with some of the existing property and where the Campus Drive relocation is and the First Street relocation. So hopefully that was helpful in reviewing that.
Yep.
So the portion of the roadway that goes toward, is it called this, it's not the state, what is it called?
Yeah, State on Campus.
It's called the state. That goes behind Lavender Cafe and Mudd's, those are all going viable businesses?
Yes, I believe that there's like a pizza shop, Papa John's, maybe back there and all the way to where, I know there's access to the parking garage over that way as well.
Okay. What other questions do people have about this?
So this new-to-me diagram that you sent earlier today, the blue outlined parking lot that kind of goes over where the existing First Street is, whose will that be, is that?
Yeah, so this is essentially, would be taking two individual WBU lots and putting that together. So understanding the, our First Street essentially kind of goes right through the middle of those lots, and in consideration of swapping those, we essentially are utilizing WBU property to put our road on, and then we're giving them, you know, the property that we have for the right-of-way of the roadway that they'll be putting their parking lot back on. I do believe they lose one or two spots in that process of doing that to accommodate some of the fill, which is why on the plat that was in your packet, that the property we're taking is much wider than the property we're giving up. And that's to account for the elevation changes between Beechhurst and Hall Street.
And where is it that you anticipate putting in rail trail parking?
It's off of this map, it's, so if you're looking at the image that was sent with the blue and the red, it's kind of in the top right, but if you're looking at a Google map, it's kind of behind Papa John's, where State on Campus comes all the way up against the trail.
It's nothing to do with it.
And if you've been down in that area recently, there was a nice steam release area that was put right in the middle of this roadway, which we'll have been talking to them about needing to relocate.
And is it accurate, I mean, based on a call that I received this afternoon, it seems like it's accurate to me? Did we not engage with the neighboring property owners?
There was not engagement with the neighboring properties, as there was no property needed for those projects, including any kind of temporary construction easements.
But we didn't reach out to be good neighbors?
No.
There was no correspondence with the adjacent property owners, adjacent to the WBU property, correct? Typically in an annulment situation, anytime you annul a road, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but more or less, you, it kind of bisects the roadway down the middle, the right-of-way, and half goes to the one property owner, and one half, the other half goes to the other. So in this case, both of those properties on either side of roadway are WBU. And this is the same process that was done on the other side, on Campus Drive. So as we essentially moved Campus Drive for that new alignment, the city took over additional, the city took over the right-of-way where the new Campus Drive will be, and in exchange, essentially, annulled the property where our old Campus Drive was, and returning that to the adjacent property owner, which was, would be WBU in that case.
So what will happen to the roadway behind there? The roadway that goes over to State, for instance? Will that be improved at some point?
That is the intention, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions? How long has this project been going on? A couple of years that I'm aware of? I think the MMPO did a study for the intersection, and then, and then the
Yeah, so.
DOH did something with it, did a plan for it?
Yeah, so this came up in the early stages of the, this particular drawing that's in front of you. This is from early stages of the DOH project. So these diagrams of what that realignment could look like with First Street are 2020. So this is, project has been going on just list level of design for three years. So we had to, you know, COVID, we basically pulled back any of those projects and put a hold on them, but were able to reengage with that project and get this, the First Street project moving forward. And luckily, the state projects don't move that quick. So we are on schedule, if we, you know, choose to go ahead and move forward with that project, that they will be able to essentially be done concurrently. And one of, you know, obviously, we never know how, you know, bidding is going to occur, but one of the helps is that, you know, the contractor that's already working on this Beechhurst project would also do that, so it becomes seamless as far as construction.
Do we have a general idea of the cost of this project?
I know that I, it had been mentioned at one point, and I tried to get that information before, as we were talking about that, but I don't have that in my hand.
And one final question that I have. I had forwarded you some concerns that I received this afternoon, not from the same person that spoke during the public portion. And you, you responded via email, and you copied the rest of council on that. Did you speak to that person in person, or just the email?
I got a response, and I believe that the information provided in the email was adequate, and no follow-up discussion was needed, at least from, based on their response.
Okay.
Is the, is the, the part of the project that's on Beechhurst, is it part of the Roads to Prosperity?
It's not that I know of.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's sort of.
It's the state's project.
It's the state's project. I was trying to remember, it, there was something along there that was supposed to be Roads to Prosperity, and I just didn't know if this was.
Bill, do you have any knowledge of whether that, the Beechhurst Corridor project with DOH is a Roads to Prosperity project?
I think that was the hope, but not the reality.
We may be beyond that point, but anyway.
Also knows it's a state project.
Yes.
And, and working with the NPO, we worked very closely to get the Campus Drive realignment made as part of that project.
Right. To roll that into the roadway project. And this will have sidewalks on it?
I believe there are sidewalks that go down there, but I don't have the drawings in front of me right now. I do believe, as perhaps was discussed last time, that the drawings are near completion and, you know, could not go out until, any kind of right-of-way, obviously, is finalized.
Any other questions, concerns? All right.
I know I'm out of hand, but in the old days, the $15,000 was the $150,000 at the price that made it $300,000 a square acre.
People cannot hear you, and we need to.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to look at this item separately. That's the.
A motion to approve.
Pardon?
A move to approve.
Second. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or concerns?
Dangerous intersection.
All right. Clerk, if you please, call the roll. Yes, Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Yexia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously, on to new business. Item A, consideration of approval of the rates of levy laid by the city of Morgantown and approved by the state auditor for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, in accordance with Chapter 11, Article 8 of the West Virginia Code. And let's ask our finance director if he would come forward. Since you're right here.
Good evening, council, thank you.
Yeah, so you might just, kind of just explain generally what this is, just so people know what it is.
It's, it's the final step of the 2324 budget process, and all we're doing is approving the levy rates that will be assessed on the property taxes, or, excuse me, assessed on the property this year. It's what everybody, we charged in the city for this upcoming year. It was advertised in the Dominion Post on 3/29 and 4/5, and as it was mentioned, the state has already seen this and approved, approved these rates and approved our overall budget as well.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this, and can I have a discussion? Boo-tu-boo. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, do we have any questions about this? Or comments?
The rates are the same as last year, if I read that correctly?
Correct, they are.
And they're the, I think they're at their maximum?
I believe so, yes.
Yes. So this is how the city gets funded?
In part, yes.
All right, any more questions? All right. Clerk would please, did you have one?
No, I'm sorry.
Clerk, if you please, please, please call the roll. Yes, Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Yexia Vega?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of a fair and festival permit for the Jim Dunn Run, July 13, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Ask the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. The Jim Dunn Memorial Scholarship Fund has provided scholarships for somewhere around 35 individuals who have qualified, and they felt worthy of their consideration to, to continue their track career at the collegiate level. The Jim Dunn Run Twilight Five Miler is one of their primary mechanisms for raising those dollars. And this one, this year, it will be held on Thursday, July 13, at 6:30 PM in the historical WARP District in Morgantown. It might be, it is well to also include in the update that the scholarship has also included stepping stones as one of its beneficiaries. The, the organization is requesting festival permit to accommodate the award, this, the award ceremony, which will be held at this WARP Street parking garage. And in the past, it's held somewhere around 1,000 participants and, and volunteers to carry out that event. So that's, that's the extent of it. Staff is supportive of that and would recommend that it be approved.
Great. It is a nice event. They usually have a walking portion. They have an eating together portion. It's a good...
Yeah, and I might add that there's been a lot of work between our arts and culture folks and, and Mr. Kitch, and the organizers of this event. There's a lot of activity going on in the WARP area, especially every Friday night. It's a very busy time of year, and, and they've been able to work out and hammer out the details so that both could coexist. And that's, that's a good thing.
So we need everybody to get out and support it on a Thursday night?
Exactly.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the permit?
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Is there anyone that has any questions or concerns or comments? Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Yexia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval of a catering event permit to provide beer and wine vending as part of the Ruby Summer Concert Series at Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. Vincent Kitch, if you would please come forward.
Good evening, mayor and council. Vincent Kitch, Director of Arts and Cultural Development, here to answer any questions. But yes, this is a Chuck Bass Enterprises, better known as Almost Heaven, is requesting a sponsorship letter to become a catering vendor, which is a new situation with the ABCs this year. And they would be doing this to be able to sell beer and wine as part of the Ruby Summer Concert Series in the summer. Over the last couple of years, I've been working in the community, trying to identify someone. We explored many options to getting into the beer business ourselves. I've also been exploring how we could work with a partnership for someone who already sells beer and wine to do that for us. And it wasn't until last fall, when a colleague at the city, who also happened to know Mr. DeFayya, said that he was interested in pursuing this new avenue, and he had a mobile bar. And so they connected us together, and we started the discussions. And in about October, I said, you go to the ABC, you figure it out, what it takes, what it looks like, what it would involve, and come back. And in January, we started having some conversations about what that would look like. Subsequently, about a month ago, we issued an RFP, and it was sent, it was put out on our website, looking for a vendor. It was also sent through the, the partnership's website. They have an RFP tool, so it was sent to all of the food and beverage vendors that are members of the partnership in the chamber, because all the downtown vendors, because basically, if you're not already a club or a bar in the, in that business, it would be a long haul to even try to get this special catering license. One of the natures of this special permit is that it can, they have to be a sole vendor for the event. We can't have cross-licensing, so we can't have multiple alcohol vendors in this series of events. And so in result of the RFP, we had no inquiries, and we had one submission by Chuck Bass Enterprises, and they have brought forward their letter seeking your support for their applying for the permit to the state. Then I can answer questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? Appreciate you putting out the request proposals.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate the extra step. Not that I felt it was extra. I think we should be putting everything out for, for proposals or for bids. And as I said, when I asked that this be put out for bid, maybe they would still be the only one, and they were. But I think we owe it to all the businesses in the community to afford them the opportunity.
Yep. So does anybody have any questions about this? Or we will, let's see, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And if there are not questions...
Hold on, I'm sorry. I might have a question. I'm trying to find the document, and then I remembered it's separate. I apologize. Give me a second.
Yeah, when it came separately, right?
Yeah, and I had a question about it, and I couldn't find it. I apologize for the holdup.
Well, yes, thanks for putting it up, Tabid. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and, oh, here it is. Okay. As I was reading the memo about it, it said that, because you said they would be the only ones due to the way the alcohol licensing was, but it's going through Chuck Bass Enterprise by way of Almost Heaven, so...
Yeah. Mr. DeFayya had a change in business structure
Okay.
due to family changes. And so his new business is Chuck Bass Enterprises, and Almost Heaven is the name of the bar.
Okay.
But that's just his company's name.
I wasn't sure if it was almost like an umbrella parent company where others could apply to be under the same license.
No, yeah, this, it's very specific. So it's, it's basically Almost Heaven that will be providing these services. He just had to change his business due to a personal situation.
It's a, it's a trade name. So it is, it is just the one that's...
Just the one. Yeah. I know, it's a little confusing. It was for me, too.
All right. Any more questions? All right. Please call the roll.
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Yexia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Another level, another layer of...
Don't want to get in people's way of getting drinks.
So, yes.
You can still bring your own.
So this includes approval of the permit and approval of the letter? The letter is how we get the permit? Or how do we look at that?
The permit will be applied. The vendor will apply for the permit from the ABCA. They will grant the permit. They require a sponsor letter from the event operator at the city here. So just the same as with a fair and festival permit.
Okay.
The city will enter, will separately enter an agreement with the vendor to provide those services.
All right. So we support them applying, and then at the tail end, we use their services if they get the permit. Okay. Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. There are a couple of items that I felt the need to update counsel on. A couple of the items are, are addressed on the, the project management tool, but I felt some of it needed to be available for public consumption. One is that we've identified for, for some time, well, probably many years, long before I came here, the need to do something with our, our airport terminal. It was built in 1963 and has not had any significant changes since that time. The, the mechanical system is, has far outlived its life, and the infrastructure is very insufficient in that it allows for a great amount of energy leakage because of a poor insulation, and the windows are in bad shape. That being the, the rationale for, for moving forward, there has been a terminal feasibility study initiated to, and is in progress, to help us determine what, what the best direction is for the city to take, whether it is to renovate and improve the existing facility. It may be cheaper just start over. We don't know. But that's what the study will give us an idea, so that once that study's completed, we'll have the data necessary to be able to go after major grants to help fund that. We're anticipating, and this is, this is maybe our airport director's pie in the sky kind of thing, but he put as a completion date, 1/22/25. So that's three years. I, I hope that happens, or two years. That's right, two years. Probably, who knows? We, I've seen stranger things happen. Also, there's been some discussion about the hiring of a new museum manager. There's been, that, that process was started last fall, actually. And our director has tried for months and has interviewed many prospective candidates. In fact, the position has been offered two or three times and, and has, in the end, been declined. So we continue. I think there's great effort, diligent effort being made towards filling that position. But for whatever reason, we'll continue to monitor that. If we need to do something to make it more competitive, then we'll do that. We need to fill that position pretty soon. The other items that we talked about sporadically over the past have to do with the street, the streetscape projects on, on Pleasant and Walnut Streets. Just to update you, we're anticipating that the, well, just to give the public an idea of what we're talking about, the streetscape projects both will, the Pleasant Street project will go from, go between High Street and University Avenue, and it will be the replacement of existing sidewalks, tree pits, pedestrian scale, and also lighting. It's a major undertaking. And, but the funding is in place. The project has been awarded for construction. It's likely to be completed the end of this year. The city's role is strictly to monitor the progress of the, of the project, but the Department of Highways, since they hold the money stream, will oversee the project, make sure it's, it complies with their regulations. And hopefully, there's something that a city feels strongly about that needs to be included, we can, we can work with the DOH. Walnut Street is the same, from High Street to Spruce Street, and includes most of the same things, including dealing with underground vaults, which was, was a real difficult process. We're working on finalizing the design plans, and we're waiting for DOH to provide some possible grant updates on that. That is all I have for city council tonight.
Question for the city manager.
Yes.
Pleasant Street, you said from University to High.
Yes.
Is it not University to Spruce?
To Spruce, I meant.
Okay.
Did I say High? I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, it, it is from High Street to Spruce Street.
Walnut.
High Street.
Walnut is.
The Walnut is.
But Pleasant, totally.
And Pleasant goes from, from High Street. You can help us on that.
Spruce to...
Spruce Street, yeah, this is, that's an error on our...
Longer.
Yeah, okay.
The one's three blocks, the other one's one block.
Okay.
But goes all the way to University, so that's the difference.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Next, we go to the city clerk.
Yes, mayor. So we have four more...
Four days of early voting, and that early voting is at the Historic Depot. And so far, we have done fabulous. Our turnout is much higher than the 2019 and the 2021 election each day. We're surpassing those numbers, so I'm happy to announce that. So far, with Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so we have six days in, we have 377 voters cast their vote. And that's fabulous. We're looking forward to four more good days of early voting. I know that we have some functions going on on Saturday, so we're hoping to get some more folks to come in. We have placed signs throughout the city, through our neighborhood, our neighborhoods, and Counselor Harshbarger will be there on the trail with an event on Saturday, which is the last day of early voting, and that is from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we'll have some signs down there showing folks where to go. We still need poll workers. We do have enough for, for Election Day. However, you never know when we might have someone who needs to take a sick day, or who knows what could happen. So we do need some more folks just to have on our alternate list if folks are still interested, we're willing to take them and get them trained before Tuesday, the 25th, Election Day. Election Day is April 25th, Tuesday, April 25th. The polls open at 6:30, and they close at 7:30. There are new polling places, so we did send letters out to every registered voter in '23 who was also a registered voter in '21, if their polling place changed. We sent them a letter, and we said, this is your precinct, and below is a list of the polling places. So hopefully, folks are getting those. We did get quite a few back today for folks, from folks who moved and didn't change their voter's registration. So, but we did attempt. So if folks still are not sure where their polling place is, you can go to our website at MorgantownWV.gov, and if you hover over the word government, and on the left, you can go down to the word election and click that. It will provide all of the election information that folks would need. Candidate information, absentee information. Tomorrow is the last day to receive an application in the city clerk's office for an absentee. It can, if it comes through the mail, it must have the postage dated, April 19. So I encourage folks, if they are unable to visit the polls for any reason, they can reach out to us, and we will email an absentee application, and we can get it back quickly from them. Polling places. So there's also a place on our website. Once you're in the election section, you can click on the link that says, Find My Council Member. And if you put your address in, it'll take you to your ward, what ward you are. If you know your precinct, there's a list of each polling place and where that is located. There's also a photo of the entrance to that polling place, telling the voter exactly where to enter the building. And then if anyone has any... And then if anyone has any questions, they can certainly call the Clerk's office and we will be glad to answer any questions they have. And I think that's it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question, you have one too?
No, you go first.
I'm curious to know, how many letters were sent?
About 11,000.
11,000 letters?
Yes. Well, because we changed early voting location, that's also considered a polling place change. So if someone was registered to vote in '21 and they're also registered to vote in '23, we notified them of that polling place change as well, because early voting locations changed.
Very good. Hey, I'm very appreciative of your efforts to make this well-known. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are the requirements to be a poll worker? Just so we can share that out with folks, or are there any, do they have to be 18?
They have to be 18. 18 or older, and they must be registered to vote in the county.
And just a comment that I got from somebody from my ward, there, I got two of these messages, and they're both folks that had just moved into Morgantown and just understood a vote and all that other stuff. And they said that even though, they like put it in Google Maps, they were having a difficult time finding the polling location. I was wondering if maybe there's any way that we can work with our comms team and try to find a way to better visually show how to get to the polling place, especially for folks who haven't really had time to explore Morgantown yet and find it. But I think that would be really helpful, maybe like a little, a walking map or something like that.
Christina, I had also received a message about having trouble with wayfinding, in terms of, once they got down there, they were just like unsure of the exact, because some people aren't sure what the Train Depot is necessarily, I guess, but there was some issues I had heard from wayfinding down there too, so.
Um.
Just feedback generally.
That's okay.
Maybe you don't have much time to implement stuff right now.
So I believe the address is 185 Garrett, and we did put that on our website, and that's also one of the notifications that did go out to folks, and there's signage, so, but I will certainly check with the Communications Director, see if there's something else that we can do to make it a little easier for folks.
It would be great at some point to get more sign, this is a long-term issue, because it's dealing with the division of highways, but it'd be really nice to have some sort of a sign that indicated how to get to the amphitheater and the depot from up on South University or Don Knotts Boulevard, or whatever you want to call it, which is not something that you have to deal with, but I've had people, when it was the, it didn't have signs either when it was a bus station. I've had people like walking down that road toward the bus station, asking if that was the way to the bus station, just because there isn't a good way to get off of the, I mean, there isn't a sign at the top that says that you're there, which is not what you have to worry about. Anybody have any other?
Thank you for the signs. I presume these are.
That's for you.
Free for me to take the neighborhoods. Great, thank you.
Yeah, you can do double duty. You can put them down at the waterfront, and then you can move them to the neighborhoods.
How much sign do we have down there at the Train Depot to indicate that it's the voting entrance area or what?
We have three or, three or four signs, starting from the highway or the main road down to the entrance to the depot, going, leading you down to the actual entrance. And there's, there's notices on one side of the building to say the entrance is on the opposite side, so.
I'll take a couple to the rail trail with me for Saturday, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other? All right. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we had a working group meeting to discuss the city's implementation of the recently passed alcohol legislation, allowing for creation of what are now termed private outdoor designated areas. That legislation is modeled on some legislation that's been successful with communities in Ohio, and so the group looked at how Athens, Ohio, which is home to Ohio University, and Marietta, Ohio, home to Marietta College, were implementing their programs, and they've both done that in central business districts with some similarities to Morgantown, so I think the group is focusing on that area. We have several requirements if the city will move forward with that ordinance, and so we had staff and council members and also Main Street representatives present to address those. We had Fire Marshal President, our Deputy Chief of Police Development Services and Management Staff, as well as Counselor Trumbull and two representatives from Main Street to work through those issues. That group will be getting a poll out, I believe, to private clubs that might be able to participate in that area, and we'll look to put together some draft language that would meet those initial requirements for the ordinance going forward and then reconvene. Also, Counselor Butcher had raised the status of the opioid litigation settlements and how those will be distributed and used. So council will recall that the city is participating in the statewide settlement and memorandum of understanding for the distribution and use of funds in settlements with manufacturers, distributors that have been resolved by the Attorney General's Office and also attorneys representing local governments. The, a portion of those funds, 24%, is distributed directly to municipalities and counties according to their determined shares under that agreement, but the bulk of those funds will be distributed to a newly created opioid foundation that will receive 72.5% of the total funds. The foundation will be controlled by a board with 11 members, five appointed by the Governor's Office, and then six appointed, one each by the local regions. So Morgantown is a part of Region Four, along with several other surrounding counties and the municipalities in those. We will get to council a total of the funding percentages of all the participating entities in our region. That will, that will determine what the regional funding allocation is from the statewide foundation. In addition, the region will appoint a board member to the foundation when it's created, and I understand Counselor Richard has been working with a consultant to the Attorney General's Office on coordinating that and getting input about when that process will get moving. I'm available to assist or to provide other information on that as well. That is all I have to report to the City.
Thank you. A report from council members. Counselor Abagadon, you want to start?
Sure. I guess first I'd like to say thank you to the students, Kaylee, Maddie, and Emily for coming in and presenting to us tonight. They did a fantastic job, and I feel like I do a disservice to talking about all the wonderful things that the students are doing and the different programs they have to offer for their classmates, so I was very appreciative for them coming in and sharing with everybody everything going on. I too will be on the rail trail this Saturday with the Tree Board in participation with the handmade market from 12 to 5:00. And if you are one of the first to get to the Tree Board, I believe we're going to have some sort of giveaway item, a small token, if you would, for this handmade market.
A tree?
Like a tree?
There was rumors of small trees.
Like a tree?
Yes. Small trees.
Around after the cleanup, be the first one there.
What kind of tree?
See, now you caught me off, I don't have my notes in front of me.
I'm sure it's on the approved tree list.
Oh, absolutely.
Some, some really nice trees, and if you come there, then you can find out what they are.
Actually, that's what I meant to say. It's a surprise, you have to be there early to grab one.
Yeah.
And then lastly, I also wanted to say thank you, Ms. Wade, with the huge voter turnout. That's a testament to all the hard work that you put in with this election, and it's greatly appreciated, so thank you very much. That's it.
Yeah. I want to mention, and I'm not sure how public this is, but I don't think anybody would object, there's a county commission meeting with the West Virginia DOH District Board tomorrow here in this room at 1:00. If anybody's interested, I'm sure you could be, you would be welcome. Again, I don't know how public it is, but as members of the MPO, we were invited, so I plan to attend. The other thing I would mention is, I'd like to give some thanks to the newspaper with their recent editorial about voting and getting, getting the vote. It's nice to see that kind of publicity for this particular, I believe that in terms of what is done in government, having it at this level is the one place that affects you most, and you can do something about it. So your participation would be more than welcome. And again, thank you to our City Clerk for her efforts in making this well-known. I appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Vega.
I don't have too much to report, or very, I just basically have one thing to report. So I personally have not had a lot of experience with collecting needles in our neighborhood and really being a part of that, but there was an incident where I found a couple of needles near my apartment building, and I just want to highlight, uplift, and encourage folks to reach out to Health Right. If you're in a situation where you see something like that, you don't really want anyone to touch it, reach out to Health Right. I didn't know who to call, and I didn't want to be the one to pick it up, so I've heard it's not, it's not recommended, but I reached out to Health Right. They connected me with an individual whose job is to kind of go out and collect those things, came in in 20 minutes, came in 20 minutes, picked that stuff up, looked around to make sure that there wasn't any more. So I just want to appreciate, I just want to show my appreciation for how swiftly they take care of that stuff. The Health Right phone number is 304-292-8234. They do have a connecting line to the person who is supposed to go out and do this, but I didn't get switched over to the line, so I didn't get the phone number, but I'm sure if you called Health Right, they would be more than happy to connect you. But other than that, I won't comment on all of that earlier today, so I will give up my time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Me. I'm just sitting here listening. Health Right is really great with that, and I run the trash cleanup groups and organize a lot of cleanups, and they have come, I've been well-trained by Health Right and Sharp's disposal, and they have come and trained different groups for me in the past, so I appreciate that. And they're always very willing to hand out Sharp's containers and things like that for us, and I provide those to other groups now. So, yeah, they're great. Speaking of trash cleanups, Counselor Kueke and I participated in the city employee and volunteer cleanup last Thursday. I was a little late after some meetings, but I went out behind City Hall with some of the city employees, and, you know, cleaning up trash is one of my favorite activities, and it's always great to, we were back there chatting with city employees, connecting, talking to them about their work, so that was, that was really fun. The Woodburn Association of Neighbors is meeting tomorrow, is tomorrow Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. at the Woodburn Community Complex. We are anticipating a more in-depth update from Morgantown Area Partnership and the Mon County Development Authority on the Richwood Project, so if anyone's interested in that, you're more than welcome to join us. And the last thing I was asked to discuss was to allow, or to let people know that a group of us convened at Hazel's House of Hope last week and have already begun discussions on what next year's warming shelter will look like, because it seems like we usually get together at the end of the summer or early fall, and based on concerns and costs and different things this year, we know that it's going to look different next year. So we're already beginning those conversations. Salvation Army, Morgantown Community Resources, Bartlett House Health Right United Way, and the manager of This Winter Shelter, we're in attendance, and we're talking about other groups that we may need to bring in, such as the National Guard, or the Red Cross, or MECA, to see what some options are for next winter, because it looks like the level of funding that it took this winter is not necessarily going to be available next winter. So they asked that I let everyone know that those discussions have begun, and we're on top of it. Thank you.
I would like to thank Counselor Kueke and Trumbull for their efforts with the cleanup and all the volunteers and city staff that were out last Thursday. Really appreciate that, and for Vanessa Reeves being here about this coming Saturday's cleanup event as well, from 9:00 to 11:00. Much appreciated for the trail and the city area, and thank you to the City Clerk for your efforts with the early voting. And as a last chance to early vote, will be the Handmade Market on the rail trail from noon to 5:00 this Saturday, and I will be there, as will Counselor Albu, to hand out information about that. And lastly, I was notified that there'll be some blasting at the Airport Extension tomorrow, beginning at 2:00, and that is in my ward, so I just wanted to put that out there for the public, that they will be hearing blasting tomorrow, beginning at 2:00. Thank you.
I should probably let Fifth Ward know about that, too. Those folks in Jerome Park will.
Probably hear it, too.
So last, I guess this past Thursday, I'm at the ACT program of WVU, they provide like direct in-home service for behavioral health conditions. I'm just seeing what kind of barriers they had. Specifically, I was told that they had a lot of issues treating people who are unsheltered. So just, I guess for council's knowledge, in order for them to bill Medicaid, they need to make contact with people four times a week, which is quite a, quite a bit, especially for unsheltered people. So perhaps, if, one of the things we had talked about, because I think there's a little bit of difficulty here with like, things like HIPAA, but what we, what I floated, and, you know, this is, it could be a bigger undertaking than what I'm imagining, but if the city ambassadors maybe could, if they make contact with somebody who's unsheltered, if they just were to send that out to whoever they made contact with, send it out to places like the Coalition or the ACT program or places like that, just to say that they did make contact, not that that information's shared back with them, so they know who's on that list, you know what I mean?
They need the name of the individual.
Yeah, just the name, but like, so that way they have a more relative idea of where that person might have been recently. They said that that could be helpful. It's just that they wouldn't be able to tell us who's like on their list, you know, because it's a violation of their privacy. Like I said, if that's an undue burden, it is what it is, but that was something.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, that they had talked about, and it seems like that could, maybe those contacts could be, if those were more readily shared amongst different organizations that we have, that could be helpful for them, too. They had also indicated, I think, go ahead.
Yeah, would you, could you send me the contact information and the organization you'd like for them to contact?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we make sure they contact the right people.
They were also interested, if they could, the ACT program, if they could at some point presenting to council, like a committee, a hall meeting or something like that. I said, I'm sure council would love something like that.
What are they called?
What's that? ACT, like ACT, yeah.
Okay.
WVU's ACT program, part of behavioral medicine. And the other thing that they had talked about that they would really appreciate, if we could do it at some point, probably is needed, again, outside of just their context, is just a, a study of, you know, housing issues in general that we might have, but I know we've conducted those in the past, but that's something else that they had talked about, that they would like to see, if they could. The only other thing I have, because I got an update while I was sitting here, our neighborhood met to, at. neighborhood met to, at, to talk about the, the local pocket park and Turtle Park and just other neighborhood issues. They will be meeting on, again, on June 4th, specifically to start planting at the rain garden there. And kids will also be able to bring small fairy shelters or houses to place inside of that, that garden. June 4th at 2:00 PM, they will have to, you will have to sign a waiver if you're going out there to help with that. And you can get more, get more information by just contacting me or Matthew Cross with our, our neighborhood association. They also said, apparently, the neighborhood really wants a sign there for that park.
Well, we were talking about another opportunity, maybe before a sign.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they, they had talked about wanting to, apparently, so I had, I had asked about changing the name to Turtle Park officially with some neighbors. And some of them were kind of lukewarm about it. But apparently, at this meeting, there was a lot of excitement about changing it officially. So that was the other thing I had to report from that.
So if we were going to have a name change, we'd want to have the name changed first-
Yes.
And then sign.
And then assign.
Just a sequencing issue. No, no questioning of the motivation.
Send those kids to present a boat park.
That's, yes, that's what I, that's a good way to get things done. All right. But that's all I had to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some large items and some small items. So the large item was, we had this really neat last week visit by Und Bio, who is wanting to set up shop in Morgantown, in the city limits. And they came first to Charleston to meet with the governor and make a big announcement that they're coming. And then they came to Morgan, to Morgantown, and they met with, with city staff. And it was really amazing to meet people who come here like they're on a mission to produce insulin at a good cost. They're trying to figure out possibly how you would give discounts to West Virginians, which we're not even sure whether you can do that or not. But, but it's pretty amazing to have a company come. They brought with them some of their municipal officials, which I don't know many other countries that come here with a company and bring their local municipal, municipal officials from home with them. But they're very excited to meet with the governor, governor's dog. And, and then to come to our city hall and, and meet with staff and see who they would be, who they would be working with as they set up shop here. But the location that they've chosen is, it's Morgan, it's West Virginia University's Research Park, but it's, it's sort of one of the highest pieces of property straight across from, from Suncrest Town, Pardon Town Center. And I've always wondered why no one had gotten that piece of property. Apparently, it was just waiting for them because they want to work with, with WVU and the hospital as part of that. And they brought also the CEO's son with them. So they're looking at their transition plan into the future. And the father is not that old. So they're really looking long-term at making a relationship. They're just very excited and on a mission to produce insulin in West Virginia. They also are interesting because they noted Korean War Veteran Memorial, and how many of, how many West Virginians had died in that conflict and participated in that conflict, and just were impressed that somewhere so far away would come and help their country. So now they're looking to help us. So pretty neat, pretty neat business and very appropriate to be sited right near two hospitals. Then, small but important item, in front of Seneca Center, there are a series, I think there might be five, but three of the five light poles in front of Seneca Center that are on regular old telephone poles, but face Seneca Center, the bulbs are out. And we had some similar problems with out on the Boulevard, some of the poles, and just plain getting the light bulbs changed. So apparently, this is something that's been going on for six months or more. I think they've been in contact with our engineering department. I think that, that the bulbs are changed by the utility company. But anyway, they're not yet changed. So whatever we could do as an entity to facilitate that, there's significant numbers of people that are coming in there in the evening. And it's just because I think it's three in a row, it's just dark. So we've had that problem on the Boulevard, and then those lights had to be changed out. So that brings us to sort of another similar issue is in Charleston, they're looking at, at changing out their, all of their lights and upgrading them and making them LED. And I don't, I couldn't quite figure out, part of the problem with LED at, at one point was that there wasn't even a tariff for it. I think there might be a tariff for it now, or maybe they're developing one. I'm pretty sure. Do they have a tariff for it, for LED? Yeah. So anyway, it would be smart for us to explore whatever kind of a relationship we could have with our specific utility and see how many of our lights we could get changed over to LED as a, as a project. And it might be that that would help with this situation at Seneca Center, because it may be that the Cobra Heads there need to be changed over. So, anyway, brave new LED world. It would be great to get as many of ours changed over as possible. And I think there have been some programs in the past, but I know that they're not all changed over because they're definitely not in my neighborhood and a lot of other places. So. There are a lot of other things going on. I think we're good. I think we're good there. So that can be the end of my comments.
May I just, there's something-
Yes.
Actually, the deputy mayor reminded me-
Yes.
With the cleanup that we had, it was very impressive, the amount of people from the city that turned out. And their enthusiasm for doing this was remarkable. I mean, it wasn't as though they were-
It was a great exercise for staff.
It was not like they were dragged, you know, dragged out of their, their offices to do it. They, they actually went aggressively at this.
Bill and I almost rolled down a hill.
Well-
We need to rope you up next time.
So I, I just wanted to, to say from my personal point of view, it's, first of all, thank you for having that done. And it's really nice to have kind of a testimony to the, the morale of our employees that are, that are willing to contribute in this manner, you know, in a, you know, essentially a kind of a thankless job that you generally have to wrestle people into. But it's appreciated. And, and like I said, I take great comfort in knowing that the morale among the employees seems to be quite, quite good. Thank you for all of the administration. Thank you.
Yeah. And along those lines, I'm looking forward to the one on Saturday, because I get really tired of the trash along Don Knotts Boulevard. And I didn't get to participate in the last one. And I'm looking forward to participating in this one. But just thank everybody here. And it's going to be a busy Saturday because there's a lot, there's a lot going on in Morgantown on Saturday. And so I think my husband's going to come down and help set up with the handmade market, and I'm going to go pick up trash. So we're going to-
Divide and conquer.
Yeah.
This is power couple.
Yeah, there we go. The power couple, haha. He's on the MRTC board, so he has to go down and help set up. No, he wants to. He wants to. He wants to.
Well, I'm meeting Vanessa at the city garage tomorrow because she and I are going to learn how to close down a lane of the street.
Ooh. Ah, they're going to let you have cones?
I'm getting cones.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Well, enjoy that. Yes.
I know I'm, I'm out of turn also, Bill.
Oh, please, out of turn. We're, we're having last comments.
Use my spot here.
I, I really felt a need to just, there have been some comments about WVU and them may, maybe benefiting from something the city might do. And let me just tell you my perspective on this. Over the last few months, I've had some pretty intense meetings with WVU staff, with Dr. Gee, with, and I can tell you this, my conclusion is that the city, the development of the city benefits directly the, the university. And anything the university does to bend, to, to improve itself, to beautify itself, certainly benefits the city. We're inextricably connected with, with the university. And we, we should be thankful that we're, we're in this together and not alone. And I just wanted to express my support that I really appreciate the effort that, that WVU folks are making to, to improve the community and to participate in Main Street and other things, really giving resources. I, I really appreciate it.
I guess to piggyback on that, this, Und Bio, they would not be coming here-
Exactly.
But for the university and the pharmacy department and everybody there, they're excited to be doing some of the research with them. And they're excited to be part of the university community. And they value being associated with a city enough that they have a collaborative relationship in Korea with their city. And they're looking forward to having a relationship here. Instead of going outside city limits, as some people do, they're appreciating having a relationship with the city and, and working with the city and, and benefiting a city, like looking how we can benefit them, but also how they can benefit us. So I think all of those relationships are really important. And this group, each in their own way, is really good at, at making relationships in the community. And without that, we don't have a very cool Morgantown at all. So.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Get that in there. We got a second on that one?
Yep.
It doesn't need a second. There we go.
My word is law.